Good morning and welcome back to the Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 meeting. At this time, we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, in the bosom of which liberty and justice pro.
Put out for a close session, please.
Ida number one pursuant to government code section 54957 dot six conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations Calaveras Public Safety Employees Association CCP SCA. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to staff announcement. This is a time for county staff to provide updates. I believe we have the sheriff on. There he is.
Good morning. I'm drawing a blank here. Good morning, Sheriff Pollendorf and other members of our illustrious board. How are we doing today? I just wanted to bring to your folks' attention some things that the sheriff's office is doing in working out recruiting deputies and other staff for the county. Right now, we're down seven deputies, four dispatchers, six correctional officers, and two correctional technicians. The pool in the outside world is getting smaller and smaller. People are finding other avenues for work, which is unusual because the federal government is telling us our unemployment rates are way down, but we're having a hard time finding people that want to get into law enforcement in one aspect or another. We're having deputies quitting because they just don't want to be police officers anymore, and the pool is shrinking because of this, not that it's a bad thing, but the requirements that are being brought to light for the police officers as a whole are getting again more stringent. So we're working with HR. I gotta say, I gotta give kudos to HR. They've been fantastic in helping us get people hired on and moving people through our process, which has been great. What I'd like to share with you folks today is I have about a two-minute video that I've talked to some supervisors that they have never seen, and I'd like to give them the opportunity to see this. So I am going to attempt to share my screen, and I'm about as technologically challenged as it gets. Let's see if I can do this. Can you guys, is it shared?
Yes.
You can see this? Okay, there we go. We live in a rich place. Coming to work in Calaveras County is an unique opportunity, not only because of the different aspects of the job, the diversity of being at 300 feet elevation up to 7,000 feet elevation. The difference here is that our department members, they love to live where they work. It gives them an opportunity to be involved in the community, a sense of pride in what they're doing, knowing that they're helping their community specifically. It's a very proactive department. You have the opportunity to advance quickly because we are evolving in our program. There are so many different things you can do in the department. We have our narcotics investigation. We have our search and rescue team, off-road vehicles. There's our boating team. We have a dive team. We have a SWAT team. We have a lot of specialized teams that a lot of police departments don't have, and a lot of those extra teams come with extra pay benefits. So there's a lot of advantages to being in these departments. The rewarding side being in the sheriff's office is that you're helping people that you want to help people. It's a true, a solid truth. The Calaveras County Sheriff's Office, where your future is wide open. There you have it. If I can go back to...
Actually, no.
There we go. So anyhow, that's something that we put together. I just wanted the board to see what we're doing to try and help promote the sheriff's office for the county. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Supervisor, stop it.
Thank you, Mr. DiVassilio. No, finally put forth. It looks like, you know, you did a lot of good information. Good luck. Hopefully, we can, you know, advertise Calaveras County as the place that more law enforcement officers want to be. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just so you know, we do, on Saturday, we actually have five, well, we sent four people to the academy, and we were able to pick up a fifth out of that academy. So on Saturday, we will be graduating five folks from the academy that will come out and be on our training program. That is not reflective of the seven that were still short. We had, we were down 12. Now we're down seven. But we're gaining on it. We're putting more people into the Stanislaus Academy in March and into the Delta Academy in March also. So we're moving forward, and again, I gotta give kudos out to the HR department. They've been very helpful in getting these people into the process and move forward. So thank you for your time, and you folks have a fantastic day.
Supervisor, Caroline.
Sheriff, where are you using this? How are you using this?
It's, excuse me, it's been put out on Facebook. We advertise it in multiple areas. All of social media, this has been put out on. I repost it on my sheriff's Facebook page, my private page, on the sheriff's offices. We posted on our sheriff's office social media pages every so often, just to keep the interest going. And it's helped. We actually have taken it down to the academies and shown it at the academies and been able to pick up people out of the academies. So wherever we can. So if you'd like to share it, you're more than welcome.
Are there any other, are there any other comments on board?
Thank you.
All right. You guys have a good day. Thank you.
Are there any other staff announcement? There are no other staff announcements. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Ms. Allen.
Good morning, Sheriff, members of the board. Corey Allen, your Health and Human Services Agency Director. With me today, we have our Deputy Director of Public Health, Colleen Rodriguez. We have Mark Twain Medical Center's CEO, Doug Archer, and your Health Officer, Dr. Renee Ramirez. Today, we want to give you some basic updates, and I'll open up the slide deck. Okay, so today's February 15th. We have 6,989 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Calaveras County. Currently, we're looking at 42 active, six hospitalizations. We have 57% of our eligible population fully vaccinated. Broken down, 7.29% fully vaccinated in the 5 to 11-year-old category. For those youth aged 12 to 17 years old, we're up at 30%, 30.35 to be exact. We've seen 6,840 recovered cases, and sadly, we've seen 107 fatalities due to the COVID-19 virus. We often want to see where we're at with our boosters. We're over 10,000 boosters provided to local residents. This data is effective as of yesterday. COVID-19 cases, when we consider vaccination versus those who are unvaccinated, you can see here that you are almost six times more likely to contract COVID-19 if you are not fully vaccinated. It's a very stark image that you can see, and this dataset comes straight from the California Department of Public Health, and this is a one-week capture at the end of January of this year. To keep it, to look at one step further, those who enter the hospital due to symptoms of COVID-19 are 11 and 1/2% or times more likely to be hospitalized when they're not fully vaccinated. Same dataset, same period of time. But look at here, unvaccinated deaths are 21.8x more likely to occur for those that are unvaccinated. So this really does speak to the critical importance of continuing to move forward in our vaccination strategy. You will know that there are new guidelines that have come out. Our governor did announce these yesterday, and masking reverts back to the prior guidelines, prior to our winter planning. So for all indoor locations, if you are vaccinated, the language being used is strongly recommended to continue to wear a mask. For those unvaccinated, it is a requirement in the state of California that you wear a mask. Counties and local health jurisdictions can impose more strict orders or directives, but not less. Schools' masking information is separated out. That information will be released in two weeks on February 28th. There is a roadmap being developed. Information will follow soon. CALOSHA points to the California Department of Public Health Guidelines for its guidance. Bad businesses or entities can be more strict. So we do have Judy Hawkins to speak to that element today that relates to the CALOSHA component. If not, then I will do it.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. So CALOSHA does point to the CDPH for guidance, and if the board remembers, in August, we had decided at that time to have all employees, regardless of vaccination status, to wear face coverings when in the workplace. One of the main reasons that this was important was it was allowing those that were vaccinated to not wear face coverings, and then employees who are not had to wear face coverings created a division in the workplace. It also made some employees concerned that those around them may not be vaccinated but not wearing face coverings. We had had many conversations with the unions and had brought forward a more strict policy when we did our update in August. And although in December, the Governor, Governor Newsom had stated that, you know, we will follow guidelines put out by the CDPH, it is still a recommendation that we continue to wear face coverings in the workplace.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. So we do want to announce that we put out a community health incentive coming out of our Public Health Division. We received limited funds, $315,000, to provide incentives to community members who are doing their part in the fight against COVID-19, and that is in the form of $45 gift cards purchased from local businesses to incentivize those who receive a COVID-19 vaccine. And so to become vaccinated, that includes the time period starting July 1st of last year and through April 30th of this year. Incentives are limited to those who are residents of Calaveras County. Registration is expected to open as soon as February 25th. You can see we have five participating businesses locally. That includes the grocery outlet in Valley Springs, Save Mart in Angels Camp, Mimo Hill Nuts and Candies, Water and Hole, and Exile Mobile. There are limitations. These gift cards cannot be used to purchase alcohol, tobacco, nicotine, or any cannabis products. I wanted to now turn this presentation over to Dr. Ramirez to talk with us about the trends in COVID-19.
Regarding the trends that we're seeing in California, we continue to see still a prevalence of the Omicron variant. The Delta variant is very much dwindled, but it's still circulating here and there. I think the overall message that we just want to drive home with our presentation is the importance of vaccines and boosters. Vaccines and boosters are safe and effective, and they decrease morbidity and mortality across the board. Just some personal story. My kids had COVID just a few weeks ago, and my son came home with it, and it was just the week before he was eligible to get his booster. And unfortunately, he got his symptoms a lot worse than the other kids. And he was fine. Thankfully, he didn't have to be hospitalized or anything, but he had a really bad sore throat, really bad aches. And then my two daughters, they also got COVID, but they had just received their vaccines just a few months ago, and they were fantastic. Thankfully, my wife and I did not get COVID, and we did not develop any symptoms or test positive, but we also had just received our boosters this winter as well. So that was just one story amongst all the others, but I can't tell you and the public how many stories, how many heartaches, how many difficult conversations I've had to had with so many members in the community regarding the loss of their loved one, and it just also so happened to be that they were not vaccinated. So please protect yourself, protect your family, protect your friends. Encourage getting COVID vaccines and the boosters. They will save lives, and they will keep you out of the hospital.
And so now let's hear from Doug Archer, the CEO of Mark Twain Medical Center.
Good morning. Thank you, Corey. So the information you see on this slide deck, although it's from Thursday, still remains accurate. We have seven inpatients that are COVID-positive today. Of those seven, four are, three, I'm sorry, three are in the ICU or are on Med Surge. Generally, they've been kind of sticking with the trend, a little bit lower acuity than what we saw in the past with, like, the Delta variant. And generally, they are unvaccinated, to kind of go in line with what Corey and Dr. Ramirez mentioned. A lot of visits in the ED, so we're still seeing a lot of patients coming through the emergency room, but many of them are being able to be managed, you know, outpatient, sent home with either oxygen or, we've been doing a little bit of the monoclonal treatments. That seems to be very successful for the red patients. We have also had quite a few, I can't think of three in the last week, that I refer to as like an incidental COVID-positive patient. And just to explain that a little bit, so we had two patients just last week that had appendicitis. You know, they came in with stomach pain and classic signs of appendicitis, but we do routine testing before we admit or before we do surgeries. And we had two patients last week with no true, you know, obvious COVID symptoms that were positive. So just kind of an interesting little anecdote there. And for the sheriff, I saw your presentation. I just want to let you know that we're feeling very similar pains in the recruitment world. The biggest challenge we have right now COVID-related is staffing. And two years in almost, and staff are tired, and the overtime shifts are harder to work, and many are taking vacations and time off, and finding staff is very, very challenging. So I feel your pain. And I think that's really, that's about it. We're still offering testing through our clinic here in San Andreas, and that volume's gone down a little bit, I think, because of all the home test kits. That's all I have to report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. So for COVID-19 vaccine, available and testing, we remind you that we have a vaccine van that is staffed every day but Wednesday, from 9:30 in the morning until 6:30 in the evening. They do have a static rotation, which means each day of the week, they go to the same location in order to provide consistency. They, let's see, we also have local pharmacies and a wellness center that provides a vaccine as well. Booster shots are available for everyone 12 and older, and we keep slots available with the van for the younger children aged 5 to 11, and we dedicate that time just to make sure that the environment is child-friendly. The boosters that you can receive, you are eligible after six months for Moderna, after five months for Pfizer, and two months for the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So you can see on the screen, we do have our listing of where our van will be, address for all the areas throughout our community, and this can be found on the Calaveras County website. So I want to last leave you with this image. Multiple layers of protection against COVID-19 really do make a huge impact. The first layer, avoid large gatherings. The second, improve indoor ventilation. The third layer, you will notice, if you just wash your hands, wear a mask, get vaccinated, and if eligible, get a booster, and you'll find that you will have a far greater result in the end. So with that, any questions? We're available.
Supervisor, Caroline.
Dr. Ramirez, are they, they, I guess the CDC recommending a second booster for people? There's just been news chatter on that. Thank you.
There's no official announcement at this time for a second booster.
Supervisor, Grandi.
Thank you. This is a question for administrative staff. I sent this an email yesterday. In our policies for our employees, we use the term "fully vaccinated," and it includes the booster shot. What is the correct definition of "fully vaccinated" versus "up to date"? How does that impact our policy and our employees?
So in the, our CPP, we had to follow the recommendations, the requirements and changes with CALOSHA, and then while we were in the process of doing that, then we had the change of also having to adopt pieces from the CDPH. And so we added in the definition of "fully vaccinated" to include a booster if eligible, because that is how CALOSHA, I'm sorry, the California Department of Public Health put in their policy regarding quarantine. And so we put that language in there. When employees, when there comes an instance where we need to verify their vaccination status, we do talk through it with our employees. We do have employees that are unable to receive the booster, and they have a medical exemption for that. And so we have considered, you know, if eligible for the booster, you know, they're not eligible if they have medical conditions, those type of things, and that's how we have been administering the policy.
So our definitions are the same as CDPH. Fully vaccinated includes a booster? Is that what you're saying?
If eligible. And so we use the language that CDPH used for their, to define quarantine and isolation, where if somebody is fully vaccinated, which includes a booster if eligible, they do not, their quarantine period is very different from everybody else. And so we mirrored that language.
Are there any other board comment before I put it out to public comment? Public comment?
Good morning. It's kind of nice to be back in the audience and not just on the Zoom calls. I'm Vicki Rainkey. And I know I've called in several times when they do these presentations on the COVID and the vaccinations, and it seems like we're still back in two years ago, that we haven't progressed in anything that we understand. And there are new studies out. There are more studies that talk about, for one, just the vaccination itself now has proven that it doesn't stop you from variants of what they call COVID. So people that are getting Omicron, I know several that have had it that were vaccinated. I mean, that, that's just a known fact, that the vaccination has not protected people from Omicron. Thank God, Omicron isn't as deadly as the Delta was. So to tell people they have to get vaccinated and incentivize them to get vaccinated is ridiculous. And so then the other part that I've asked about, and I get the answer, well, the vaccines are safe and efficient or effective. Well, that's just nonsense. So anyway, I wanted to share with you an article, and you can look up more on it on yourselves, but you're leaders of our community, and if you don't understand what's going on, and we think we're going to vaccinate our children, that is the most horrible thing I've ever heard of, to force vaccination on children. And we need to educate our parents on what this vaccination is and what it isn't, so that when they make that choice with their child, they know what they're getting into. And because this is, this article is directed towards children and vaccinations, it's still about the vaccine itself and some of the dangers of this vaccine that we are starting to see now. This vaccine, what has been out maybe a year, if that, there has been damage to people because of this vaccine, and now that it's not even effective against what they call the Omicron, and we keep pushing it, it just, I just don't even know what to say. But this is absolutely outrageous, and we need to get back to normal. To go around, keep wearing these masks, I mean, it's horrible. I can't even see your faces and know what you're looking like, because that's, and then in our schools, to continue putting these masks on children. It's child abuse, and it always has been in my mind. So anyway, we, I just hope that you, as leaders, will start looking at this a little more seriously and, and start being an advocate for the children, being an advocate for the citizens, and stop this nonsense that comes out of our public organizations that are not even medical doctors in a lot of cases. So anyway, I wanted to share this article. I'm going to give you one, two, three, four, five, six copies. Unfortunately, when I made the last copies, it wasn't as clear at the top, so you might have to look it up online. But how do you give thanks to people? Thanks. So you can understand what this vaccine is about, because the person who wrote this article, he was one of the inventors of the mRNA technologies in the 80s, and so he knows what this vaccine is and what it isn't. And it is a, not a proven vaccine. It's an emergency use. So we have not had testing for years on this vaccine. That would be one of the reasons not to give it to children, because it isn't proven. And anyway, I just hope you educate yourselves, and I hope that our medical teams here that come and give these announcements every week would start reading more in depth and not just follow along with what the government's saying. And again, just to say, we see all around the world, not just in Calaveras County, but all around the world, that people are sick of it. They're tired of being told they have to wear a mask. They're tired of being told they have to get vaccinated, and they're tired of being under control by their government. So let's get on board with freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that, is there any other public comment?
There is no online public comment.
No online. Okay. Thank you. Supervisor, stop it.
To the vaccine point. First, it was stop the spread. Now, you, you know, we, you won't get as sick, and you'll stay out of the hospitals. Now we have, sorry, booster shots of the Pfizer, BioNTech, and Moderna. Uh, now we have, sorry, booster shots of the Pfizer, BioNTech, and Moderna vaccines lose substantial effectiveness after about four months, but still provide significant protection in keeping people out of the hospital during the Omicron surge, according to a study published Friday by the Center for Seiz, Control, and Prevention. So now we're looking at possibly a booster every four months. How do we keep up to date? How, how does that affect us? Um, you know, following the science, it seems to be fluid. That's all.
So a quick comment, I, I'm not sure I heard your question or your commentary, I think was more of what that was. Um, but just to put things in the perspective, how many, and you don't have to answer this, but how many is your cell phone? Did you get the latest update? Is it five years old?
No, not at all. I, I, I wait till my break before I say it.
So, but the point is, how, of your cell phone, how many times does your cell phone get updated? Even if you use the same old cell phone? And to be in compliance with the county and your computer system and IT, I'm sure there needs to be some up-to-date antivirus, and there has to be some secure measures for you to use your laptop or your cell phone or the county email. This science is in real time, and we are doing our best to provide up-to-date information with the data that is out there. There is a virus, and the virus continues. Viruses are not new. Viruses have been around well before we have. Viruses constantly try to outsmart their host. That's what viruses do. There was a time when Apple computers were taught to this, being immune to viruses. Well, that's not true anymore. Same with the Apple cell phones. This is what the viruses do. And what we do as scientists, doctors, people in health education, people in public health, is we do our best to stay up to date with the most current literature and the most current recommendations. And I would welcome anybody on this call, anybody in the world, to come up with a solution, please, because the world is asking for your help. Help us to find a solution to make this irrelevant anymore. But as of right now, vaccine, and people are continuing to provide up-to-date vaccinations to account for the changes in these variants. These are people who are working to help other people. So my question is for everybody there, please help us come up with a solution to help other people, not to harm other people. As evident by the statistics that Ms. Corey Allen shared, six times being more likely to just contract a virus, almost twenty-two times more likely to die. Now, everybody who has a 401K or any type of investment option, I'm sure you put your money in places that offer far less growth. But when you're denouncing science without a better, healthier, safer alternative, that concerns me.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Um, I have some quest, oh, it looks like Supervisor Stoppa still has another que, okay. I have some questions. I think maybe this is going to be more directly to Judy. Um, you mentioned earlier that the last time we revisited our policy was in August. Um, what is needed from us to support staff to reevaluate if needed the policy um and update it to reflect the current um mend uh recommendations coming out? Um, because I, I guess one of the concerns is to, you know, IG boosters start coming out, um, how, how are we going to reflect some of this information? Because we're not checking vaccine codes, we're not checking the status, it's on a system at this point, and um, we want to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page here.
So just to be clear, what I stated um that we had done in August was to require the face covering. The policy was updated in January as required by Cal OSHA. They had come out with new um definitions and requirements um in their ETS. And then we also had the order by the governor in December to also incorporate the changes by the California Department of Public Health. So it was updated and sent out to everybody in January. Uh, with the vaccination status, we do have uh staff such as behavioral health, public health, and the correctional officers who have to provide us with proof of vaccination. So um, or they have to have filed an exemption with HR. And so we do have those that have to provide actual proof. We are working with those departments right now to get their updated status, to ensure that they are eligible for their booster, if they were, that they have received it. And um, those that have exemptions, we test weekly, and then correctional officers who are not um vaccinated, we test weekly. And, and that's done, they have the option to come to HR and do the testing. We have both PCR and the antigen tests available for employees. So um, also, if we have an exposure, if somebody is exposed to COVID and we have the allegation that they are fully vaccinated, then we do reach out to them to get the proof of fully vaccinated. So under those circumstances, we do make sure that they pro, provide the appropriate proof.
Okay, thank you. I guess going back to my original question is, what do we, do we at the board need to support staff in updating our COVID policy at all at this time?
So I have worked with county council um on updating this policy. I'm not sure uh what it is the board needs updated, but we can, any concerns, we can definitely address.
Just based off of your comment that we were more strict in August, I just want to make sure that we're given this support from the board level to keep up to date that is needed. I, the changes are coming down the pipe. So if there's no, no support that's needed from the board to discuss further policy change, then that, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're um on the same page with you guys, and you know that we need to support any changes that are needed, yeah?
So just following up on your question, Madam Chair, this, the CPP is an administrative document put through by the administrative office. We don't vote on that, correct?
Correct.
Well, and I agree with, I agree with our, with our chairwoman. Um, let's just make sure that we're doing it correctly.
You answered my question. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Any other board, any other board comment? Nope? Okay. With that, if the, Ms. Allen, if there's nothing else to the presentation?
Just want to say thank you so much to the Public Health Division at the Health and Human Services Agency. The work that we are doing, the work that this team has been doing is absolutely outstanding. Um, they have managed through the ups and the downs, and Colleen, if you would please make sure that the team understands just how much we appreciate the enduring work. And that's all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. With that, we'll move on to item number three, which is recognition and acknowledgement. Cloak.
Item number three, proclaim the week of February fourteenth through February eighteenth, twenty twenty-two as Kindness Week in Calaveras County, and further deem the county as a Random Acts of Kindness Zone.
I believe Mr. Brigant is in the room. So um, it is, I will read off the proclamation. Whereas National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed February fourteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas Calaveras County participated in Random Acts of Kindness Week in two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty twenty. And whereas all who lived, lived in or were within Calaveras County are encouraged to practice random acts of kindness, a tradition started in Angel's Camp by Jim Brigant's family, and now therefore be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors designated the week of February fourteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to be kindness, kindness through the county. And with that, is there any comment from Mr. Brigant?
Hi, I'm Jim Brigant, as you well know, and uh I just wanted to say that I appreciate uh the Board of Supervisors' support for this over the years. Um, that Random Acts of Kindness Week is ongoing. They're going to celebrate the Kindness Day nationally on the seventeenth, which is Thursday. So the county office education, again, has been supportive of our effort, of our little homespun effort to try to change the world one person at a time. So this year, we made five thousand of these kindness wristbands up, and we passed them out around the school district. And so we came up with, actually, to honor my lovely wife Judy, who said, but we should put on the kindness wristlet, is wristband, is kindness starts with me, because that's really what it, that's where it starts, for sure. And so, not me, but me, everybody collectively. So um, the hope is that planting seeds of kindness, making kindness a topic, first, a decision, second, and an action, third. So with that, here's a hundred wristbands for you to pass around your family and community as you go back out into your community and also here for the county. So um, I do thank you for your support. I hope we'll be back next year, and um perhaps we'll see some of these on wrists around. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
I do. Jim, this is just, you are a random act of kindness to Calaveras County. Thank you for starting this, though I do miss my carnation.
Well, we do live in a really nice place, and we have a lot of nice people, but, you know, the world needs kindness now more than ever. I keep saying that every year. Last year, we took the year off for COVID, wasn't sure how we're going to do it, but I went to see Scott and the CCOE, and he said, let's do it for sure. We're a hundred percent behind you. So give a lot of credit for the county office education, um, credit to the community and the citizens, so be watching for the kindness wristbands and make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. And with that, is there a motion by the board? Oh, is there any further public comment? Nope? Okay.
There is no public comment online.
I'll move aside, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors declared that the county of Calaveras to be deemed a random act of kindness zone during the week of February seventeenth, and continue from that day through the year of twenty twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
I did that backwards. I think so. So if there's anyone in the public that wishes to get, we'll hand, put these out for now, and grab more. He walked out before we could.
He did, he left.
He left. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now we will move on to the next item, which is general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is with the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda. It may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on the matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. Is there any general public comment? Any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda. The multiple items on the consent agenda, is there any board member that wishes to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on consent agenda item?
There is none online.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll take a minute. For everyone, um, ten minutes, ten minutes, um, for every staff to get ready for the regular agenda informational item for item number eight.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Your mic's on, Jack.
Hello, and welcome back. Um, we will start off with our regular agenda item, number eight, and I believe Gina, there you are. Hi.
Hi.
Everyone, we're, we're, we're back in session. Can we, can we have everyone paying attention and uh just a little bit quieter in the background? Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Fuldor.
Thank you. Okay, Gina, you're up. I should have the cloak read out what we're about to talk about, though.
Okay.
Item number eight is informational item from planning, the presentation of a general plan implementation, annual work program, and request for direction on priorities.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Uh, let's see if we can get this thing started. Okay. Are we seeing the PowerPoint?
Gina, before you get started, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you push the display settings button at the top?
Display setting at the top?
There's a dropdown.
Okay.
Do you see it at the very, it's the middle? It says, show taskbar.
Oh, yes, yes.
Will you click the dropdown?
And?
And swap presenter view, so that we can see the full PowerPoint.
How's that?
Thank you.
Better?
Perfect.
Oops, okay. Only I've got this on the wrong slide. Hang on. Okay. I'm assuming you guys, so you see the PowerPoint okay then, right? Was that a no?
No, you're fine. We can see it. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I just need to move this out of my way here. Okay, so as um just briefly explained, um today, I am here to provide you with the annual report um of the general plan implementation measure uh program um as required by general plan implementation measure LU one A. So as I'm sure you recall, um, you adopted the um, the general plan update back in November of two thousand and nineteen. This included a number of implementation measures um that were incorporated into the plan. Um, specifically, we have a total of two hundred and thirteen. Ninety of those, um, once established, will be ongoing measures. Um, twenty-seven of those relate specifically to the zoning code ordinance update. In two thousand and twenty, uh, you gave our department um direction, um, setting priorities for the following list of implementation measures, including the development of the Valley Springs and Copperopolis community plans. Uh, we will go through these, um, this list individually um through the next series of slides. We will go through these, this list individually through the next series of slides. So as you recall, adoption of the General Plan Update created many inconsistencies between the existing zoning of properties in comparison to the newly adopted land use designations. We refer to this as our cleanup effort, more formally known as the countywide zoning map update. Through this exercise, we determined that we were going to go ahead and rezone all of the interim zones of unclassified and highway service. At the same time, also to be consistent with the new land use designations that were just adopted. So as you're aware, we prepared a revised map showing all of the new zoning that was heard by you and adopted in March of 2021. Shortly thereafter, we realized that we had overlooked a number of parcels, ran those back through, and you did the final adoption of the ordinance in April 27th of 2021. So the countywide zoning map update is complete. Next, we'll move on to the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. As you recall, we've already commenced this process. We brought forward to you a presentation in January of 2021. Where we are to date is we've basically broken down the entire code into three different sections. Staff has completed our preliminary draft of the zone districts and use regulations. I am nearly finished with my revision of the countywide regulations, but we have yet to dive into the administrative procedures. That will be the last one. So once we get the preliminary drafts completed, we will start to begin our public workshops and study sessions. We've determined that it would be far easier for everyone if we kept the separation of these, of this document, and we will be bringing them forward to you and the public separately. Once we get all of our public comments, we will go ahead and package up that complete draft and bring it forward to you for consideration. Initially, we were expected to include the short-term vacation rental and special events provisions. Now we're thinking that they need to be pulled out of the comprehensive update to get additional input from the public, as well as the industry, to ensure that we are headed in the right direction and what's best for the county. I think this is going to take a little more detail than we would like to kind of spend time on with the rest of the update, so we'd kind of like to separate those out. But we will be looking for direction from you, and it'll be up to you to decide exactly what route you want to take. Last year, Peter had reported to you that he was expected, that the ordinance was expected to be completed by spring of this year, but as you know, due to staffing situation, the progress on the zoning ordinance has been rather slow. But as soon as we appoint a new director, we anticipate significantly picking up that pace and continuing on. So the Valley Springs and the Copperopolis community plans. Valley Springs policies have already been adopted. Those were rolled into the general plan back in September of 2020. We have yet to commence the process of developing the Copperopolis plan. We find that there's great value in holding community meetings. Due to COVID, that's been rather difficult. I'm hoping that those regulations will soon ease up a bit and allow us an opportunity to, you know, invite the public in this, to participate in this exercise. Once again, once the planning director is appointed, I am certain that we will commence the process of the Copperopolis community plan. I know that there's a lot of individuals out in that community that are anxious for us to get moving on that, and I can assure you, we are as well. Greenhouse gas baseline reduction plan, we have already been, that started, we've been actively working on that. As you may recall, that is a program that is funded through CCOG. We have been working with a consultant along with the City of Angels. We have broken this process down into two phases. We took the baseline inventory forward to the Planning Commission. They do have some concerns prior, after that, the reduction plan will be phase two. So once we get through, once we get this through to you and get some further direction, then we will hopefully commence the process of the reduction plan and continue moving on. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this because we are preparing a study session to bring forward to you in March that will include the consulting team, as well as Amber Collins with the COG. So the room and benefit basin fee update in addition to the traffic impact study guidelines. The traffic study guidelines were adopted in 2020. I've consulted with Public Works in regard to the benefit basin and REM fee updates. They've informed me that they are working on a request for proposal for a consultant that is currently being prepared, and that they do expect this to be a multiple, multi-year Farmland mapping and the resource production conversion mitigation program. So the DOC has their map, farmland mapping, all online. However, it does include some outdated Williamson Act data from our county. We were unable to get them the most updated data before they put that map online, but they do update the map every two years. And so we do have an opportunity this year to collect the data that we need to get to them, so that they can upload that most current Williamson Act data, which will then enable us to move on to the next step, which will be the beginning of the development of the mitigation program. Oakwood Land mitigation program. This project has yet to be initiated. I approached the Oakwood-Hardwood Advisory Committee during their January meeting about assisting us with the drafting of this mitigation plan. We will be furthering this discussion with them at their next scheduled meeting on March 31st. So haven't really drafted anything yet. It's still just in a discussion phase, but we have reached out to them to see if this is something perhaps maybe that they can assist us with. If not, then we may be looking at hiring a consultant to help us with the, with the With that, it's short, it's sweet. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions at all, I'm sure that this is an appropriate time.
Are there any board questions? Supervisor Calaway?
Gavin, what about updating the other community plans? That was a discussion that we had.
Well, it's not on the list of priorities that I retrieved from last year's presentation to the board, but certainly if there is a public interest in that, then, you know, we can, I'm certain that we can commence those as well.
And what about a dark sky ordinance?
That's going to be up to you, whether or not you want that to be a priority. Right now, it should be something that will be rolled into the overall zoning code update.
It would be?
We can, yes.
I'd like it. Of course, I'd like it for the last.
You'd like it now.
I'd like it now. So do I ask my colleagues now for their thoughts? Don't speak up. That's all right.
Please define the question.
I would like a dark sky ordinance as part of, or some permutation thereof, as part of the zoning code update. I guess there's no support on this board for a dark sky.
Hold on, hold on. I have one question for Gina. How much work are we adding to your load, or do we need to do a separate list? Because I'm a little bit worried with not having a planning director right now and short staff voting in the department even more. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that, not that, to be dismissive, I just want to make sure we're conscientious of what we start asking for where this conversation leads.
Right. So I am hopeful, as you probably know, if you recall, I've only got another five weeks as your interim director, and then I will be falling back to my old position as a planner three. I am hopeful that we will have a planning director in that amount of time. Basically, what we are doing as staff is just, is kind of putting together our own version of a plan to move forward, identifying those, obviously, priorities that we're hearing from the board, in addition to things like, you know, dark sky ordinance. I think it's loud and clear. It's been something that's been discussed for a long time, not only by you, but the Planning Commission, as well as the public. So these are things that we will be gathering a list of and presenting to our new director upon that day. And I'm certain that as a group, we will be moving forward with all of these things once we get a new director.
Thank you. Supervisor Garimindi?
Carrie, go ahead. My father.
Well, I was just going to say, thank you, Madam Chair, that Gina, if you remember years ago, I think there was a draft ordinance that we discussed, probably 10 or 12 years ago. I don't know if that draft ordinance is still around, if you can dig it up or find it. It may save some time if we could make that presentation back to us, that draft.
So you recall us as staff actively working on that? We presented a draft to you?
I'm thinking, Rita helped me here, 2009, 2010, that time, and it came before us, but we didn't, we didn't do anything with it. It came with a noise ordinance and a bunch of other things that came before us at that time. But it should be, we should have a draft ordinance on it.
Okay, that gives me a little more direction. I'll dig around, see what I can find. That might make matters a lot easier.
Yeah, Gina, thank you very much for the last almost five months that you've kept this, the vehicle going. I think the board, I speak for the board, and that we really appreciate what you've been doing, keeping this place together. It'll be very interesting when we get a new planning director and how we approach this and prioritize. I mean, I think that, you know, going back a decade, a dark sky ordinance is a good thing to do. How it fits in the priority list, though, is really going to be the question, and I would hope we could work that through with the, with the staff and then the new director when they come onboard. And we have to talk about, okay, well, when we have that, how are we going to enforce it? And how are we going to make it clearer to people, so they're not just blowing up code enforcement's phones on everybody's light out in front of their house? Those are all questions. It's a, it's a little, it's complex, but I certainly would support dark skies ordinance.
Supervisor, stop it. If I may, Madam Chair, I completely agree with Mr. Garimindi and Ms. Calaway. It does need to be done. We have to watch what, what the enforcement is, how far we go, whether it's high density and everything else. If there's some work done, maybe we could use that as a basis, but I also want to remain cognizant of the workload for the planning department until we get a new planning director in there. And at that time, I feel we should definitely sit down with the new planning director and go over with them what our priority list is, so that we can all be on the same page, because every director works differently. I do appreciate the work that's happening now. You know, that's beside the point. So, you know, I'm open to the dark skies ordinance, especially if there's some work done, and maybe we just need to make a few minor changes. I'm open to it. You know, it's not the top of the priority list when I look at things, but I'm definitely open to it.
Supervisor Calaway?
Oh, no.
Is that clear for you, Gina?
Yes, I'm searching, I'm searching the R-Drive right now. We'll see if we come up with something.
Okay. If there's no further comment from the board, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. Is there any public comment, either in the room and or online? It looks like we might have an online.
There's one on online public comment. Tom?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
First of all, the, before I get started, the dark sky ordinance you're looking for was on the Planning Commission agenda on November 19th, 2009. That's 11, 1909. So I'm Tom Infascino. I'm here on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on implementation priorities for the 2019 General Plan Update. Today, we pose a number of questions we hope to get answered. First, regarding staffing. We agree with the statement on page three of the staff report that staffing limits have significantly affected departments over the past year. We would like the hiring of the planning director, and in addition to that, the filling of the vacant planner three position and the filling of the GIS and agriculture department positions to be a priority. We'd like to know what you, the board, think about that. Second, on the zoning code update, the staff report notes that the code update has been broken into three sections, and that preliminary drafts of two of those sections are nearly complete. We at the CPC believe it may be easier for the public and the development community, and perhaps you, the board members, to review and comment on the ordinances if they were released in these smaller parts, rather than all at once. What do you guys think? Also, at the 2021 Priority Setting Meeting, the planning director indicated that it would be wise to add some additional content to the open space plan before creating the open space zone. We at the CPC support that recommendation. We believe that it is important to have a map that identifies priority lands for long-term conservation. What do you guys think? Third, the Copperopolis community plan. The CPC would like the county to start this community planning process in Copperopolis. What do you think? If community plan processes are not going to begin on the Highway 4 corridor, please consider putting on the Board of Supervisors' agenda quarterly workshops on planning issues of concern and options for addressing those concerns in those communities along the Highway 4 corridor that don't have community plans. Arnold, Murphy's Douglas Flat, Avery Hathaway Pines, and Copperopolis. What do you guys think? Fourth, the GHG reduction plan. We agree with page two of the staff report indicating that the GHG reduction plan will not proceed without clear board direction on the draft GHG inventory. The CPC would like the board to provide that direction in the next 60 days.
Your time is currently up. Thank you. Cloak, is there any other public comments online? There is not.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience before we bring it back to the board? Nope? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any further comment on the informational item by board members? Gina, thank you. Appreciate it. Look forward to having a further discussion later on when we get a new planning director.
Look forward to having a further discussion later on when we get a new planning director, which we're hoping, knock on wood, will be sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we'll be happy to come back and have another discussion and get our new director all up to speed.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Actually, if we could take a break to allow staff to get set up, I apologize. So do we, 10-minute break? Okay. So before, before we get started, I just want to let everyone know that the presentation being given to us will cover both nine and 10, but then we will go back out and address nine and 10 separately. Is that clear? Okay. So, we'll move on. Clerk, can you please read both items that the presentation will be about?
Item number nine is an action item from the Division of Cannabis Control, introduce and waive full reading of an uncodified ordinance, reducing the gross receipts tax rate for cannabis activities specified in Section 3.56.050(c)(2) on a temporary basis as authorized by Section 3.56.070. Authorized summary publication requires affirmative four-fifths vote. Item number 10 is an action item, Division of Cannabis Control, introducing and waiving full reading of an uncodified ordinance, reducing the cannabis cultivation tax rate specified in Section 3.56.050(b)(1) through (3) on a temporary basis as authorized by Section 3.56.070. Authorized summary publication requires affirmative four-fifths vote.
Thank you. And good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Greg Wayland, your Director of Cannabis Control. The item today, as was just stated, recommends the introduction, waiver of reading, and authorization of summary publication for an uncodified ordinance that would reduce the canopy taxes, our local taxes, on cannabis activities, including cultivation and retail for the two items that are before you today. Just as a little bit of background, it's always useful to put a reminder out there that the difference between taxes and fees is significant for our department. Our department is a fee-funded department, and all of our activities in the permitting process are all funded through fees paid by cultivators. Taxes, on the other hand, are paid by cultivators as well and are paid as general revenue funding for the county. The issue that we're presented with today is whether or not the board should make a response to what we're seeing as prevailing conditions in the market today of a steep decline in wholesale cannabis prices. This is a relatively recent phenomenon in the last six months, that to the point that it's at today at least. And it's the Division of Cannabis Control's belief and recommendation that it does warrant some action by the Board of Supervisors, and we'll be happy to present on that. It's also an issue that is incredibly complex to parse through in a relatively new industry, a complex industry in the state, both from a regulatory and taxation standpoint. So I'll do my best to walk through some of the local tax implications and speak to some of those complex issues. But at the end of the day, the most concrete evidence that I have for you today is the actual impact on our local industry that taxation and regulation, particularly from the state, has imposed. Today, we have 14 cultivators that are arrears in one quarter of taxes. We have two cultivators who are in arrears, or 13 that are in arrears in two quarters of taxes, and four that are in arrears in three quarters of taxes. So this is a significant fact because the Division of Cannabis Control has the authority to revoke permits for non-paid taxes. And the cultivators, most of whom are all fairly recently permitted, they stand a lot to lose, and this is something that they would try very, very hard to avoid. So it's a significant telltale of the straits that they are in today. So what I'd like to do is dive into a PowerPoint that will address some of these issues in more detail. Okay. So as stated, this is an item that proposes the reduction of taxes. There are two different taxes at issue. You have cultivation tax, which is a square footage of canopy tax, and that's in Section 356.050(b)(1) through (3) of the county code. And then you have the gross receipts tax, which for all intents and purposes today pertains to retailers. We currently have four retailers, and that's a gross receipts tax in subsection C. So one of the, one of the issues that we're seeing is a complex setting where we're seeing growth in our local industry, but at the same time, fairly significant hurdles for the industry as they grow and continue to adapt to the business climate in California. And so one of the key concepts that I want to emphasize is that structural loss of businesses in the county is a significant thing compared to what the board might see, just to propose an idea that it takes much longer for a business to get up and running than it does to forgive or reduce taxes for a short period of time with the hope that it helps some of these businesses recover or weather the storm. If the board recalls on July 10th, 2020, Measure G came before the board, for the board to consider adopting a resolution that would call an election to adopt Measure G by the voters. In that, in that ordinance that the board put to the voters was a provision that allowed the taxes to be lowered in the board's discretion, and I'll get to the exact language of that. That provision was actually discussed and deliberated by the board, and ultimately it was changed so that a four-fifths vote requirement was added, so that if the taxes are in fact lowered, it must be done by a four-fifths vote. The taxes can be restored so long as it's within the maximum amount of taxation that Measure G allows. So I'll get to that exact language, but it's significant because it begs the question of what is the correct tax rate? It was set initially at $2, $3, and $4 per square foot for outdoor, in, or mixed light and indoor respectively, but that was a starting place. And the voters of this county expressly granted the Board of Supervisors discretion to make changes to that if they find that it's appropriate to do so. And that's the question that is before the board today, is what factors render that appropriate? And I think that market conditions and preserving local businesses is one such, or two such factors that the board should consider. It doesn't necessarily mean that any particular action is required or called for, but it does, it does show that the board has discretion to take up this issue and make a decision today. And it also, it also puts out there the issue that those initial tax rates were designed to be changed, and it expressly gives the board the authority to do that. So again, what we're proposing as a response for the board to consider today is whether tax rates should in fact be temporarily reduced to help address a sharp decline in prevailing cannabis wholesale prices, as well as logistical issues that the industry is facing as it continues to grow, and again, adapt to a regulated cannabis industry in California. Without the relief, the Division of Cannabis Control, which I'll call DCC from now on, and this is an educated guess at what we might see in terms of attrition, but it's somewhere between 20% and 25% is what I would think that we may see in terms of loss. And as I mentioned at the outset, we have 14 businesses that are delinquent, one quarter, 13 in two quarters, and four in three quarters. And Chapter 356.120d gives some guidelines on what that might look like in terms of revocation, but it's one of the issues that I felt was appropriate to bring to the board to discuss this today before developing a fair and uniform way of handling that with the industry. So again, the idea that it's easier to sort of lend a hand to the industry rather than see structural loss of businesses is one of the key concepts that I want to put out there today, if in fact 20% to 25% is realistic, which is what I think. So getting back to the provision of Measure G that was adopted by the voters by approximately two-thirds on November 3rd of 2020, subsection 070 authorizes the adjustment of, the adjustments of rates. And the provision that I referred to as underlined in this, the underlining is added, the Board of Supervisors may, by a four-fifths vote, impose the tax authorized by this chapter at a lower rate, and may establish exemptions, incentives, and other reductions as otherwise allowed by state law. The section goes on to state that they can be restored, and in fact, the ordinance that we have proposed today would self-terminate. So unless the board took this issue up, and assuming the board took action today to introduce this item, it is a self-terminating ordinance, but the board is free at any time to go in and adjust and adapt as you see progress. And as I stated, one of the benchmarks of success, should the board choose to move forward with this item, would be how many businesses we see start to recover and catch their breath a little as we go through 2022. And that's something that the DCC would be happy to continue to come to the board and provide you information on as we go along, again, if this item is introduced and ultimately adopted. So the proposal that we've brought to you today is a reduction of the, essentially what is today a retail tax, but a tax that would also apply to distribution, reducing it from 5% down to 2%, so that's a 60% reduction. And then as far as cultivation goes, it would be a 50% reduction across each of the three tax rates. So that would be $1, $1.50, and $2 respectively for outdoor, mixed light, and indoor cultivation. There are significant differences between the two businesses and the implications for tax. We have, again, four retailers, and that is not as dynamic as our cultivation permits are, because we currently have, I believe, about 53 permits that are conditionally authorized. And so the number of permits, just to show one of the dynamics in all of this on what the Measure G revenue might be if this were adopted, we can see growth at any time. We can see the number of permits increase, we can see it decrease too, but 53 is a significant number because at this, around the same time last year, we had around, I believe, between 37 and 43 conditionally authorized permits. And in calendar year 2021, our permits grew by a total of 54% in one calendar year, and the total square footage by 43%. So that's very significant, and it shows you just one of the factors here that is essentially can change the dynamics of this significantly in a pretty short period of time. But 54% in calendar year 2021. So our proposal, which we've set out there as a reduction of 50% on the cultivation tax rates and a reduction from 5% to 2% on other cannabis activities that we permit, is what the proposal is in Items 9 and 10. Just to sort of give the board some context, there's really no set pattern that we're seeing around the state. The reaction is very different, as are each of the jurisdictions. Monterey County does not authorize, it's my belief that Monterey County does not authorize all the activities that we do. You have Humboldt County, which last Monday actually voted to reduce their cannabis excise tax, I believe by 85%, but a significant number. Nevada County, San Francisco County actually suspended their tax rate, but their taxation on cannabis activities is a significantly less percentage probably of their total revenue that they use to provide services to the city and county of San Francisco. So in looking at this, what I can tell you is that there is no set way that jurisdictions are addressing this. In fact, the tax, the rate of taxation and the basis of taxation varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction too. So the question is, what's right for Calaveras County? And, and so that's the question that we wanted to bring to the board and discuss today. And it can look like whatever the board deems appropriate, if anything at all. So this will provide some more detailed figures on the square footage, and these quarters refer to calendar year 2021. As you can see, at the start of calendar year 2021, we had about 1,305,940 square feet of outdoor canopy. Indoor was just 1,750, which is more than doubled in that year. All told, the rates of increase for outdoor was 42%. Mixed light was 53%, and of course, indoor more than doubled. In fact, we're seeing a trend that as the program matures, we're seeing more and more transition to mixed light and indoor. And there's a number of reasons for that that I could speculate on, but that's, that's just the trend. Mixed light increased by almost 10% more in calendar year 2021. And so the applicable tax rates being applied, you can see on the bottom portion of this slide what the total revenue owed would be in those calendar year quarters. And so of course, it increased for outdoor to $926,000 roughly dollars, $4,250 for indoor, and roughly $262,000 for mixed light. So this illustrates the drastic change in the program and why it was so difficult to fix what the impacts of a rate reduction might be on the industry, and more importantly, what, what the change to revenue for the county might be if the rates were lowered. Because 2022 has just started, and we don't yet know what this year is going to look like in terms of our applications and permits. And one thing that I wanted to also mention regarding the industry itself and as the board takes up this issue, today we have 516 CBCBs. The number of CBCBs has grown substantially since this program started. 516 is a large number of employees working in the industry, and so there's also a downstream effect that the board should consider with this item of what are the impacts of those employees being in our county, going to restaurants, gas stations, service stations, grocery stores, hardware stores, any number of places that they go. Not all of them are currently, most likely, I mean, I would assume that most, most of them are active, but probably not all of them, but all the same, it is a large number of employees that the industry employs in our county. And that's all of our owners and workers that we track through our background check process, who go through the trouble of applying with us, passing the background through the CalPOJ, and obtaining their CBCB badge. So these are, these are people who have shown some investment in our community. So permit and canopy totals. Again, this is another snapshot that shows the increase in the number of permits issued, which was approximately 54% in calendar year 2021, which is what these figures are. 68 is still current, we have 68 permits today. This is another depiction on the increase in taxes owed by the cultivators. And so you can see the increase between the quarters of calendar year 2021. And because this year is just beginning, it's difficult to say what this is going to look like with those 53 conditional approvals. I will say that despite prevailing conditions in the market, these are all people who have paid their main application fees, so they are pretty invested at this point in their application, and advanced because they have gone through the trouble of identifying and obtaining possessory rights or title rights to property and gone a long way towards establishing their business.
Excuse me. If I may just, are those numbers cumulative or are those broken out?
These are by quarter.
Those are by quarter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I have some other figures that are not in the PowerPoint, but these, these are going to be discussed in terms of percentage, but the actual figures themselves are to be discussed in terms of percentage, but the actual figures themselves are not. And actually, I'll present on this in just a minute when we look at the deficits in payment of Measure G. And here it is. So one of the things that I've seen with our industry is a desire and commitment to following our regulations. And one of the things that you'll note in quarter one, we have 44 permits. All 44 permits paid their Measure G tax in Q1 of 2021, so that's 100%. Quarter two, 58 permits, 54 paid. That's a total payment percentage of 93.1. In Q3, 67 permits, 49 paid. And so you can start to see the trend that we've seen since the beginning of quarter three in 2021, which ordinarily, especially for our outdoor crowd, would be a time period that they're receiving revenue. So we had anticipated that this would be a time period where they would be able to more readily meet obligations for the payment of tax, but instead we saw the reverse. And so that's another point of evidence in terms of the headwinds that they run into in the market. So that payment rate is now 73.13% today. In quarter four, which just ended on January 31st, we're only two weeks past that final due date, we have a total payment rate of 55.88%. So those total paid figures are for Q1, 2, 3, and 4 respectively, 763,000 roughly, 815,000, 824,000, and in quarter four, $630,000. We have noticed that because of the logistics of bringing product to market, that a lot of the times permanent, cultivation permits will catch up, and it's not uncommon to see a couple of weeks go by, or maybe a little bit more time. And so we expect for the 55.8% to come up as product is brought to market and sold because a lot of that is receivables for them right now. But that is what it is today. It's 55.8%, and that's as of the end of January of this year. So it's been a couple of weeks since those payments were finally due. This is a visual that helps depict what we saw. You can see in the blue line the number of permits in 2021, and in the first quarter, payments are even with the number of permits. And then you can see the number of permits going up, and the orange bar is sort of state somewhat level and has gone down. And on the left-hand column, the number is going up to 80 is the number of permits, and on the right-hand column is the percentage of payments. So the orange line going across the middle of this graph shows the decline in the percentage of payments as calendar year 2021 went along. And this is part of what, this is part of what made us feel that this was an item that should be brought to the Board's attention for consideration was this decline in the number of payments of Measure G tax. And again, just another depiction of the total balance between the number of permits and the permits that are paid. From the left to the right, you can see they're even and then progressively become delinquent as you get to quarter four. And again, we do expect for the number of permits that have not paid to catch up, but nonetheless, this is where things stand as of today. In terms of projections, I have to caveat that all of these projections are very difficult to assess. There are several factors that make it extremely difficult to project what we think the revenue will be, including what's going to happen at the state level this year in terms of regulation and tax relief. And then also our local cannabis industry, whether we are going to see growth like we saw last year, which certainly it's poised to do, but due to market conditions, we don't know how that's going to look this year. Nonetheless, there are factors here that make it very, very difficult to really project with any accuracy what these will look like. So what we did was we projected a loss of about 45% to 35% of actual revenue received in Q4 of 2021. We believe that this estimate is conservative, and it would be equal to $409,788.99 to $346,744.51 per quarter for a total of $1,639,155.88 to $1,386,978.44 for the entire calendar year of '22. With the addition of retail revenue, it would add a total of $191,269.30, which reflects a reduction of 60% compared to what we received in calendar year '21. And as I mentioned earlier, retail is a little different than the cultivation in that retail does not, is more static than cultivation. We have four, and it's probably going to be four, not dramatically changed in calendar year 2022. It has to do with the market here locally, whereas cultivation can be distributed and moved throughout the state, so it's a little different, and it's poised for growth. So we think that the $191,000 is fairly accurate for what the revenue might be under Measure G for our retailers. But another issue that we can't really project is what would be our revenue for distribution because that has just recently gotten off the ground. And so you can see there's another factor here that makes it difficult for us to tell. So we chose, we believe that it would be best to go with a figure that is conservative, and based on concrete data that we have, and with the 45% to 35% reduction. And what we get is a projected revenue of $1,830,425.18 in between that and $1,578,247.34 for calendar year 2022. So with the caveat, those are difficult to assess, this is our best educated guess on what those might look like.
Supervisor, stopper.
Quick question. As to the gross receipts, you know, it's a blanket gross receipts that applies to distribution and retail, correct?
Yes, sir.
With that said, last year, we did a slight change to 17.95 allowing distribution, and I think we opened it up to a possible five full-blown type 11 types of distribution within our county.
Correct.
How many people put in an application for a type of, full-blown type 11 distribution inside our county?
It's my recollection that we have limited distributor applications, but I do not believe we have a general distro yet.
General, so there's no general distro underneath that?
I do not believe so. It's possible there could be one, but I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. That's who I thought it was, but I just want to make sure that, I'll bring that up later.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Supervisor, stopper. I think we made a really strong case for certainly the impacts on the growing community. We understand commodities and how that goes. Since we're doing both presentations together, tell me, can you unpack the impacts that have been happening to the retail side? Because I'm seeing prices fall through the floor for the wholesale side from the growers. I'm not seeing prices reduced on the retail market, which makes, you know, the uneducated mind I have think that the margin is growing larger in there. So maybe you could help me understand why we're reducing taxes on the retail side? Is it filtering down to the?
It's, it was our belief that relief to any of the local cannabis businesses would trickle down. And I think that generally speaking, the retailers are going to feel a little bit of the same market adjustment that cultivators will to some extent because the entire industry is growing and adjusting to the regulated environment. And so I don't have specifics as to how much exactly, a way to make that objective for you, but that's the best response that I can give you right now.
Well, I'm just thinking if, you know, I will use industry I'm more familiar with, but prices at Rayleigh's and Safeway is going up, has been rising for beef, whereas the people who produce the beef, prices haven't been raised. So someone in the middle is making some money there. I'm just, I'm just, it's a concern that I have. I understand it tickled down, but.
That's a good point. I understand that.
That's right.
Thank you. Greg, any more to your presentation? After the questions that we got from two supervisors, I just want to make sure we're wrapped up, and you have presented everything you need to say? You good?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Are there any other staff comments at this time for the Board or the public? Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to open it up to public comment. When we move it over to public comment, we're going to do in the room, and then we will revert to online to make it easier for the clerk to make sure everyone's heard. Once all public comment is done, we will come back to the Board after everything's heard. Please be mindful of your minutes. There is a light on the podium, and for those of you online on Zoom, they should post to be a sound, not beep that yet. So the clerk will help you with those who are coming in on the Zooms. So with that, we'll open it up to public comment.
Can I ask a question of clarification to this section of the meeting?
Yes.
I wanted to clarify, if today's meeting, if you will be voting today to do this one or the other, or will this come back? I see there was a notice in the.
This is a hearing for the first public, first public.
So you won't be voting today, but we'll have another opportunity to.
Today, if I may, Madam Chair, today is the introduction of the ordinance and waiver of first reading, and so yes, you're correct, Ms. Rainkey, it will come back to the Board for adoption at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So with public comment, since the presentation covered both items, I think that needs to be clarified too. We are going to start with comment on item nine, then we will come back and do public comment on item 10. So that way, there's no confusion. So we'll start with public comment on item nine.
Yes, I'm going to comment on number nine. Vicki Rainkey with Calaveras Residents Against Commercial Marijuana. And I know we sent you a quick memo that you may or may not have gotten in time, but we're concerned about reducing the tax that the voters voted on. And I want to remind you that what was the purpose of bringing this industry to Calaveras County, all of those of us who were here through the five years of discussion, it was to bring in revenue to our general fund. That was our main purpose as a Board that brought forward this, even though the people, you know, truly asked not to have it even come to this county. So that's one. And I think there was a good question asked by Jack that why are we reducing retailers' percentage? They're at 5% right now. And again, I want to remind you what it said in the tack. When we voted, the voter's pamphlet has a little blip that people vote from that. Now, very few people will go and read the whole ordinance and see what was actually in the ordinance, but you know, that was something we helped try to educate the public of what was in that ordinance. Anyway, it said to improve essential county services, including road maintenance, crime prevention, environmental regulation. Shall the measure establishing maximum cannabis activity tax rates not to exceed $7 per square foot? We're nowhere near that. And 8% of gross receipts. We are nowhere near that. So that's what the people read when they voted. They thought, oh, $8 a square foot and 8% on retail. We started off with a 5% tax on retail, and we started off with a $2 tax on outdoor, $3 tax on mixed light, and a $4 tax on indoor, which seems fair enough, you know, to me as a citizen, that that was, those were fair taxes. The people who wanted to come here and open their businesses knew what those taxes were. They also saw it on the, what the people were voting on. So, you know, keep that in mind. We're talking about reducing taxes on people, and we're only looking at for 64 people that have a permit in our county. Hopefully, you will really think this through because it was three people on this Board that put this whole thing through in the first place. So it wasn't even a majority of our Board that approved all this marijuana cultivation and marijuana dispensaries. So those are the main points, and for you to think that through before you reduce the retail tax on our retail businesses. And like they said, it doesn't look like there's a big reduction in people buying and paying the price. Oh, thank you.
Jennifer, District 2. I'm going to be real quick today. It seems like you're creating a protected class, and that's un-American. And I think that each one of you should be talking to people in your own districts, not just the growers, because 64 people isn't a big expanse of the constituents that you guys have. So I haven't seen any town halls, any information about this. You're not getting any feedback from any of your people besides the ones who want the reduction. And I don't think a reduction in taxes is going to fly very high when you keep putting people like me in the vice. I still have to pay everything I owe, and if I don't, then my property gets put up on some kind of list that says the government's going to take it. So, you know, I just am tired of being on the wrong side of government all the time. We're just getting squished and squished and squished. And I'm looking at Canada thinking it's about time here too. I just, I hope you guys hear me.
Is there any more impulsion comment before, we have one more walking up?
Aurora Weatherby, District 5. You know, reducing the taxes on the retailers for the marijuana group, if you do this, are you going to lower it on everybody else that have been curtailed under the COVID rules and their businesses closed? The general fund was to receive this money, and under the urgency ordinance, there was still $3.5 million that wasn't collected by the county from previous growers and maybe even current growers. I submitted a question, number 11, on that very amount of money. No answers have ever been forthcoming. So now they can't pay their taxes. Did anybody think about the law that says they can have six plants, and if you've got a husband and a wife, that's 12 plants? Did anybody consider the illegal grows that was going to affect their market as well? Or the outside influence of the cartels coming in and bringing in more contraband over the border into this country? So they want a tax reduction. Well, if the money doesn't go in the general fund, then are the taxpayers of the county, such as myself, are we going to subsidize these people because they're not paying their taxes? But I'm paying my taxes? And if I don't pay my taxes, you take my property and you sell it at the gazebo out in the courtyard? I'm on a limited income. My taxes went up $600 last year. I brought my papers to the tax department and asked for clarification. What I was told is they brought my property out of depression due to the sales values of the homes around me. of the homes around me. That's apples and oranges. My house isn't worth $500,000. Thank you.
Are there?
Alice Montgomery, District Three. Thank you for all your hard work and thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't really think anybody here wants someone to fail. I understand these guys are working hard. It alarms me a little bit that they didn't get up to speak. I wonder if they know the outcome. Signal insight. Are we ignoring signal insight? I kind of think we are because all the signs were there. Smarter, faster, safer, greater, farther, better. Why are we not doing that? Incentives when someone is not doing well is okay, except that I looked up all the counties that did start to lower the taxes. It did not improve the rate of how, how many people brought in taxes or the amounts. So the whole purpose behind this, I really question it. So if you, if you reduce the taxes, what we're really saying is, hey, let's defund law enforcement. Let's defund programs for the seniors, the planning, every department in this county. We're defunding it by doing this because that's funded by the general fund. So I think we have to look at all the employees and say, yep, you're going to get less. You're going to have to do with less, even though you've been doing with less. There's 11 million reasons why we shouldn't do this. That was the amount that the growers promised us. Remember the sign there on the way into town? Oh, we're going to give you 11 million dollars. It's never been 11 million dollars. So I worry about that. Also, when you're finding section one, letter H, it says we have to do this because we have to preserve the barrier between the illegal grows. If we let them be more successful, which this is not going to do, it's going to preserve the barrier between the legal grows. That's not true. As soon as we allowed commercial marijuana here and tried to regulate it, we had an increase in illegal grows. And that is, if you check with law enforcement, you will see it. In the intensity, the severity of the crimes and the amount of legal grows, the amount of them grew. So just check that with law enforcement. That's a fact. So my question is, and just someone wise once told me, if you catch yourself digging yourself a hole, it's probably best just to put the shovel down. That's all I have to say.
I'm not seeing anyone getting up any more impulsion. Okay, clerk will switch over to Zoom.
There is no public comment online.
None? Okay. Seeing that there's no more public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stoppa.
I've received a lot of correspondence, both sides of this. Something to clarify, Mr. Guerminde, last year I brought up the gross receipts tax when it applied to distribution. So more so, Mr. Wayland didn't just conjure this up out of the air. I asked this to be looked at for the reason of distribution. Where they were succeeding across the state, where they weren't, places like Kalinga, Sacramento, El Dorado, where they were 2%, they were sustainable. There's no technical write offs when it comes to distribution with the way the tax code works. So this is the reason I asked Mr. Wayland to bring this forward. It wasn't in the interest of retail at the time. And listening to Mr. Wayland, the, there's zero general distribution applications at this time. If someone would put one in and find a place, it would take them over a year to develop that business. So that's not really part of the conversation I originally intended it for. And I brought this conversation up prior to the current situation that's being brought before us. The retail side, although, you know, they, the gross receipts is passed on to the consumer. So at that time, they aren't being hit by the tax as much as they're passing it on to the consumer. So my original intent was for distribution, but unfortunately, the gross receipts tax blankets both retail and distribution. Right now, I don't think a, you know, even though I asked you to bring this forward in the past, just because I wanted to look at the economics of it, the 2% will affect the, the industry as much when it comes to sustainability, just because of the facts that I just brought forward. So my apologies for asking you to look into that, but it's not really part of the factor now as much as the canopy tax is in the discussion. So my, my first suggestion on this is if the board so wants, let's leave the can't, or the gross receipts tax at 5% for right now and continue on with the debate about the canopy tax and then also the debate about the sunset date.
Thank you, Supervisor Stoppa, Madam Chair. Ben, I, I agree. I'm baffled. I, we need to expand businesses in Calaveras County and I hear what you're saying about the distributorship. You know, we got 516 CBCBs on the cultivating side primarily, vast majority of those are. You know, by a factor of three, you know, say three jobs are spun out of every one full-time job, that's 1,500 jobs. When the cement plant was going, it was roughly the same size as this industry. It was just concentrated, not distributed. So we have to protect that. But, you know, you may be on a good point looking at item number nine or 10 and then number nine. I do support, if we could create a new industry to distribution, that's, that's a positive. I just don't want to be giving a break to a retail who may not need it as much as the people who are producing the commodity itself.
Something more to say?
Well, I did, I did think while you were speaking, Supervisor Stoppa, it's something that if you, if there's interest from the board, we could bring back and sort of study what we're seeing in tax rates and distribution in other counties at a later date, but that's, that's, that's.
I think, I think right, right now it's apples and oranges and it's not going to really have an effect on, on the industry like, like the canopy tax. So right, right now with no potential applicants, and even if they were to put in and apply, I think that the gross receipts tax is a null point in my mind. And I apologize for having you look at it earlier. You know, that was my original intent, but the distribution thing, when it comes to a general distribution, the five spots that we opened up hasn't become a reality yet. So.
If, if, I'm sorry. Yeah, if there were applications, we have the ability under this law to come back and figure out how we can incentivize.
Yes.
A new industry, which I think would be appropriate. We want to have new businesses. We want to be pro-business.
Supervisor Callaway.
I'd like to move this from three quarters to four quarters because I don't see a change. I also would like to keep it, I would like to recommend reduction. The other, all other businesses, non-cannabis businesses were allowed to apply for COVID relief funds. The cannabis businesses were not allowed to apply for COVID relief funds. I'm talking just retail now. So, and I know it was said, well, it's passed on to the consumer, but the consumer's also having to eat costs. And if we could at least, if we could lower it, that would also help the consumer. And so I think we should accept it for four quarters. And I will be asking that also for the cultivators, move it from three to four quarters. And the distribution, I'm willing to look at that later. It's not part of this, but that's, so that's where I stand on this issue. I would want to modify it to go from three to four and accept the recommendation on the balance.
Any other board comment?
Supervisor Callaway, I respect, I respect that point. I just wanted to offer some rationale for the three quarters, where, why that was added. So a lot of the times, indoor mixed light are successful in making products that are more marketable and easier to distribute to retailers because of the quality of the, or the properties of the product. The outdoor crowd seems to have been hit the worst. And growing season roughly, we thought of something that was sort of measured so that the board can come back and have a look at this at a later date, but it was roughly corresponding with what their growing season was so that they're getting back into the harvest season by the end of the third quarter. That's why it was three quarters.
Any other board comment? Supervisor Stoppa?
I'm receptive of the four quarters, but staying at 5%.
We're still on item nine, just to remind you.
I know we are. Okay. Okay. So as long as we're talking about we're so pro-business, you know, we're, we use that word. When COVID came, we worked. I was really proud of the work the board did on grant, on helping our local retail businesses stay in business. But in this case, we're not doing anything to help this retail business. And I think if we're pro-business and we're also concerned about the consumer, that we should consider the recommendation of going from five to two.
Any other comment from the board? Staff comment before I bring it back for, because this is an action item, so I'll bring it. Any other comment from staff?
No, thank you.
Okay. This is an action item for number nine, so is the.
I'll make a motion.
Supervisor Stoppa.
I'm going to go outside the recommendation, but I, I, I'm just going to say, let's, I'm going to vote or make a motion to keep it at the 5% gross receipts tax for the time being. Please bring something back in the future when it's convenient so we can actually study this. I would add in the four quarters, but it's a moot point at this time on item number nine.
The four quarters is a moot point?
It, on number nine, yes, because if we, with my motion remaining at five, remaining at 5%, there's no sunset date on 5% Ms. Callaway. So, is that, is that clear enough?
If I, if I may, Madam Chair, I think that, and I could be misunderstanding, but if the motion was to not do anything from the status quo, then we don't need a motion for that. It would be to, to just not take action today. But the board could certainly give staff direction to do as Supervisor Stoppa suggested and study something additional or bring something back in the future.
I would appreciate that. That's my suggestion.
Supervisor Guerminde.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm not against this. I don't have a hard line to use. I just want some data to back up why we're doing that. And we made a very strong case on number 10, but I would just need some data to back up number nine.
Supervisor Callaway.
We can't introduce this, modify it from three to four quarters effective January 1.
No, you could certainly make that motion.
Because if we just walk away and do nothing, then what does that mean?
So I, again, I may have misunderstood, but I understood Supervisor Stoppa's proposed motion to be to, to leave things as is, as they currently stand today. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And so Supervisor Callaway, I was merely pointing out that if that is the, the will of the board, that wouldn't require a motion. That would just be to take no action today. It sounds as though you're proposing an alternative motion that is basically what staff has recommended today, but extending it to four quarters. And you could certainly make that motion if you are so inclined.
I am inclined. So I wish to make, I wish to, no.
It squats by stairs. Because we don't need to make a motion on that.
So I wish to introduce wave reading of the ordinance and modify it from three to four quarters.
Motion on the table is the second. Do I do the last second? Please.
Please bring back a study so we can come back into this further unless there's another motion, but if the board's intent is that. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, please bring it back for further study.
I will.
And then please incorporate the suggested changes as well. Okay. So that is item nine. We are moving on to item number 10. So we had the presentation earlier. We will now open item number 10, public comment into, we'll start with the room and then we will move to the Zoom. Please be mindful of the light in front of you to be fairness, so I don't have to call you out in mid-sentence and waste your, waste your time. So, public comment.
Chair Foulendorf and members of the board, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Zach Travon and I'm an attorney whose practice is focused on cannabis policy and licensing over the last six years, including multiple farms here in Calaveras County, continuing to operate in good standing under the county's program with several others proposed for permitting. First, on behalf of my clients and signatories to the letter submitted yesterday regarding Measure G tax relief, I know, I want to extend a sincere thank you for your thoughtful consideration to help our cannabis farmers and business owners in their effort to survive this extremely difficult time. As you know, over the last year, the cannabis market in California has experienced a severe decline in wholesale pricing due to several factors, including an undersupply of retail outlets statewide and an oversupply of product from local jurisdictions along the central coast, allowing mass scale, low-quality production. Over the last two years, a vast majority of permitted farms here in Calaveras County have operated in substantial conformance with local and state regulations. Additionally, through the collection of permit fees during this period, the county has been able to validate the intent of its program through the funding of several county staff and sheriff's office positions, which is advanced enforcement of commercial regulations as well as impacts against illegal operations. However, under current market conditions, local farmers who have invested into transparency and compliance under local and state business licensure have been left reeling with their livelihoods as well as the viability of the county's program on the brink of collapse. At this critical point, while the proposed 50% reduction in the Measure G tax rate is appreciated in principle, we must do more to truly provide our legal operators the ability to restabilize their businesses and compete with counterparts in other local jurisdictions across the state. Notably, Humboldt County recently reduced their local tax rate by 85% from $1 per square foot of canopy to 15 cents. Humboldt's local program is the most comparable to the structure of businesses upholding our program here in Calaveras County, with a modest volume of businesses comprised primarily of outdoor operations producing a high-quality, sun-grown product. Other municipalities that have recently provided tax relief include City of San Francisco with a one-year tax holiday for cannabis businesses, Sonoma with an extension on payments with no penalty, City of Merced with a reduction of their initial rates over a year ago, as well as several others currently considering reductions, including the counties of Stanislas, Sonoma, and Lake. Accordingly, we are before you today with a humble request that the Measure G cultivation taxes be reduced proportionally by 85%, placing the applicable rate at 30 cents per square foot of canopy for outdoor. Although we would still be at double the rate of our closest regional market competitor from a jurisdictional standpoint, this would provide the relief necessary to allow for the allocation of funds to replant and cover operating costs before the next season's harvest. In your consideration of this request, please keep in mind the successful compliance record of local permitted farmers and absence of any significant threat or negative effect of such operations on the community at large. To the extent that these offers have assisted in the alleviation of the stigma associated with the legal cannabis industry, and as the seeds of goodwill have been planted at the outset of this program, we are asking you now with the utmost respect, please allow us the opportunity to thrive so that the positive impacts to the community at large in the form of jobs, continuing economic stimulus, and reinvest. in the form of jobs, continuing economic stimulus, and reinvestment into this community can continue to blossom. With that, I thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other public comment?
Speaker Ranky, Calaveras residents against commercial marijuana. It's never enough. It's never enough. We all sat here through this process, that's who I am, to come here to remind you all not to forget what the discussions were in this county over marijuana being grown in this county, and what we were going to get for it. And we all knew that the market was going to fall. We all knew that it wasn't going to take away illegal growing. We all knew these things. These things were told to us as we were going through this process. But it was decided by a very small minority of board members that we needed this here. And we were going to have all this money in our general fund, okay? And that's the money we're getting from taxing the cultivation. Originally, taxation of cultivation was going to be on the buds and the product, and that was complicated. I understood that. So, you put out a new Measure G, so that the people could vote to do a canopy tax, which would make it easy on the growers, because now they just, who knows what they get for an acre of grow? Does anybody know what they make on an acre of grow? No, I don't think so. And, and what is this income look like? We're charging them $2 a square foot for an acre of grow. That comes out about $87,000 a year in canopy tax. That's it. That's all they have to pay. They don't have to pay us anything else. And so, you know, now, it's, it's not enough. We have to reduce it down to 15 cents or 25 cents. We don't, you know, I know everybody's been complacent lately because marijuana has come here, but we used to have a ban in this county, and all the people thought that was permanent, but it wasn't. And so, why don't you ask that question again? Why don't we ask our community, do they really want this marijuana industry here, if it does nothing for us in our general fund? So, you know, I hope you guys think this through, because what you're doing is really outrageous. This, this was the whole purpose of bringing this industry here, and, and the product hasn't changed. It's still marijuana, and it's still a drug, and its purpose is to get you high. And yes, some people use it for medicine, because maybe it numbs their pain. And that's fine. They can use the marijuana. But Calaveras County is not responsible for curing the ills of this industry. It's happening all over California. It was anticipated. Next year, big business gets involved in the marijuana? You think that's not going to affect all these growers? If you want to do a business, you have to make your own decisions about your business. Do you want to get in this business, or don't? And if you do, you better pay what you're supposed to be paying. And besides, I just wanted to bring up that there's 14 cultivators who are behind, I'm sorry, that means 53 are in compliance, which is kind of a nice thing. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marie Wright. I have a business here in San Andreas, and I live out in West Point, District 2. A lot of businesses have been struggling in the last couple of years. My business fortunately is not retail, but it still has been struggling because the citizens of this county have been struggling, and other businesses have been struggling. And therefore, it, it makes it harder for every business to continue when our clientele is generally having a hard time. I know that the county also has needs, and the county's needs, needs tax revenue and other fee revenue in order to survive and provide services. However, it's a balancing act, and the cannabis business seems to be in a temporary difficulty. Hopefully, the, the wholesale prices will go up, and everything will work out for them. These things go up and down, as you all know, that are business. But it's important to keep these businesses going, to provide jobs for people in this county, and weighing it against the interests of having tax revenue, I think having them going and that, just for, and cutting the taxes for a discreet amount of time, temporarily, just to help the businesses stay, is better than to lose these businesses to other counties in the long term. So, I'd just like to add my voice to request that you reduce the taxes for the cannabis industry temporarily. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for letting me get up and say something. For our farms, I'm, I'm Mark Miller with Blue Eagle Ranch. We have two farms in the county, and we have room for expansion to more than double our size. We've built two buildings in the county, employing a lot of people. We have another building that we have planned to build, but that's on hold for now, even though we've put it into, it's going through the county system in order to build it. Temporarily, we need some help. The, our business is not sustainable unless we have some tax relief at this time. We're hopeful. We have, we have big plans for the future. We want to grow, and with our growth means growth in taxes. We're current on our taxes. We want to stay current on our taxes. We want to partner in a, in a positive way with our community. So, I just appreciate it that you're recognizing that we're having difficulties right now, and that there is some willingness to help us out. Thank you.
Okay, I'm here to speak in support of the 85%, matching the 85% reduction with, with Humboldt. But I'd like to read a couple of things here. I am currently aligned with the cultivators that we have 173,000 square feet under, under licenses. We pay about $30,000 a month in canopy tax, and that's a big number. Reduction would be a blessing for us. You all know that in the, in the recent harvest season, we have experienced an unprecedented drop in the market price of one pound of cannabis flower from an average of $1,000 to approximately $400. So, there is some unintended consequences of not reducing the tax, and a vote for not, a vote for yes, that provides legal cannabis companies a reduction, holiday, or other relief from exorbitant taxation, is a vote in favor of and support for a consistent, sustainable, and safer marketplace for cannabis consumers. A vote against providing temporary relief for cannabis companies and cannabis cultivators is an overwhelmingly strong yes vote in support of the continuation and strength of the illegal and unregulated traditional or black market for cannabis. So, you're making that decision. If you don't help us, that could allow the black market and traditional market to flourish without developing more the legal cannabis market. The leaders in the state of California, San Francisco down to zero, Humboldt 85% reduction, Santa Barbara, and I know the other counties Mr. Whelan pointed out, are considering items and attempting to help a, a growing cannabis marketplace, which will be benefiting, will, will benefit the county in the long run. And I would definitely support a four-quarter reduction. So, don't be the supervisor that gives the illegal cannabis operators an additional opportunity to prosper at the detriment of the legal market. If you do only support a 50% reduction, I can assure you that a way to help the cannabis cultivators and any of the cannabis companies would be to take every aspect of 17.95, and I believe there's only three or four of them, that are stricter than the state rules, and the cost of regulation to us would, would go down precipitously. And I don't believe that would be, that could very well be in the revenue, revenue-neutral item for the county, because there's several parts of 17.95 that are so, that are stricter than the state rules, and that's an issue that might, the board might consider to direct staff to analyze and research. Thank you for your time.
Mark Bolger, Rimrock Farms. Pleasure to see you guys. Haven't been here in a while. It's always fun to come down here and talk taxes, talk politics. I want to address Ms. Ranky's point. I think she's absolutely correct. Big business is coming. Corporations that want to rub out the small farmer are absolutely barking at the door. And I want you to look out here. Every single one of these farmers was here in 2016. You guys give yourself a pat on the back. These are fighters. These are people that stuck through some really hard times here. Really, really hard times. So, what we're talking about here is, we're not coming here with our hat in our hand begging you. We're just showing you the market reality. It's tough right now. And I mean, Jack knows this better than anyone. Farmers are really good at complaining. Really, really good at complaining. If it's not the weather, it's the pest. If it's not the pest, it's the prices. Right now, it's the excise tax. It's what the state's charging us. It's what you guys are charging us. We've got an unsustainable model, and no other form of agriculture has to deal with a production tax before they've harvested their crop. Guys, we want to pay our part. We're very, very community-minded. None of these people would be here right now if they wanted to cut and run. A temporary reprieve on taxes would be a lifeline to this industry. As other speakers said before me, I think four quarters is probably more viable, because our harvest doesn't come in till October, November. Prices don't really get situated till about December. Come February, right now, we realize how screwed we are. So, you know, three quarters doesn't really get us to the point we need to. I sent a memo out. I hope everyone had a chance to read it. I'm another business owner in the county. I don't have time to give the whole breakdown, but my farm is about four times the business worth sales of my other business, and the county gets about 33 times the amount of profit. You've got some wiggle room. We've got a little bit of play in what you can charge these farms and still be very viable for the county. And we hope to be viable for decades to come. But right now, either the golden goose keeps laying a couple eggs, or you cook it, and we're done. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Hi, Alice Montgomery, and I want to thank Mark. He brought up some really good points. And again, as far, I can only speak for myself. I don't want to see anybody fail. That's not why I'm here. You want people to survive. You want people to thrive. I need to dispute a couple of things, though. When they said, like, it went from $1,000 down to $400, the price of cannabis, I think it's lower than that. I think it's a little bit lower than $400 now. It's a huge, huge market drop. My fear is that this is not going to be temporary. Like, the urgency ordinance was temporary, only it just got worse. The sheriff says it's about $8,700 every time they go to try eradicate an illegal grow. If you, Mark, you will see from the time we started the urgency ordinance and allowed commercial marijuana, we do have more illegal grows, frequency, severity, crime, and environmental damage. That's the fact. So, if they say, oh, we're going to help eradicate the illegal grows, we already know that's, that's done. It won't. There's a glut of marijuana on the market. There's not anything anybody can do about that. I feel bad, because the state laws were not written for boutique growers. So, it's almost like we're rearranging deck chairs on a sinking boat. You cannot do it. It's not, no matter how, if you cut it down to zero, the state laws are not for them. We knew that from the very beginning. I feel very, very bad about that. It's, it's not okay, but it's the way it is. And that's why I'm not for trying for four quarters, or trying to prop people up, because then we must do it for everything else in the county. And again, we're defunding critical things. I really thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for your hard work and all your consideration, and you that run this department. I thank you.
Madam Chair and fellow board members, my name is Terry Strange. I have been in the industry quite a while, including back in the CCWD director days. I want to thank you for the opportunity to not only talk, but to bring this issue up. And Director Whelan, I want to thank you for a very informative presentation. As, I'll try to make this very brief. There have been a few conversations that I'm here to support, one of which is to, to look at extending this relief into the fourth quarter, which I think makes a lot of sense, especially if you look at the outdoor and a lot of the products that, again, aren't really taking the market until December and January. That provides a great opportunity. I also want to say that, and reiterate, that even though this ordinance was written based on a $500 per pound flower average, I think that number is significantly less than that, especially if you look at outdoor prices that have been in the 200s, the $250, which is really half of that. And at least on, on the farms that I'm affiliated with, where it's more of an outdoor, some mixed light, but mostly outdoor product, that is much lower than that $500 number. So, any sort of significant relief for the outdoor and mixed light is, is, is significant. I did go through the process in quarter three of a late payment, and was kind of surprised that not only is there a fee for a late payment, but there's additional monthly fees that add to those fees, that add to those fees, that add to those fees. So, as a result, I made sure in, in quarter four that I got that paid off, dipping into family funds and other things to make it work, because I did not want to pay a penalty. And I, you know, we're, we're still working on that. I think that certainly it's a, a very complicated and diverse industry, and we're learning pretty much month by month on how to be a player in here. I think that one of the things that we really haven't talked about that is in the horizon at some point in time are the federal taxation process that's going to take place. We don't know what that's going to look like. And so, I'm encouraged to be here today and listening to all the conversation, at least understanding that we may have to seek very creative ways of keeping those of us, you know, in, in business here because of the significant benefit that it plays out to the entire county. So, I, I appreciate your time. You know, and again, I'm, I'm encouraged by what we're looking at today, and then also some of the very accurate and compelling statements that others have made up to this point. Thank you.
Are there any other public comment in the room before?
Hello, I'm Corey Kite from Kite Hill Farms, District 4. I want to thank you guys for putting this on the agenda, taking a look at what we're struggling with in the industry. It's refreshing that our county is one of the counties taking a look at how to help our farmers, and I appreciate that. I want to use Gregory Whelan's number at $500 a pound and just kind of show you, numbers-wise, what we're looking at as farmers right now. At $500 a pound, our tax rate on the state side is $160 of that. That's 32% right off the bat. You know, for someone like me, you know, I'm looking at around 22% of my revenue goes to county taxes. And that's not including what's going on on the federal level right now and what I have to pay there. My tax rate just for 2021 puts me over 70%. So, when I run my numbers, go through my bookkeeper, get my taxes prepped, I'm producing at $236 per pound. There's no money left. So, when my tax rate is over 70%, has it? So when my tax rate is over seventy percent as a business owner, I really would appreciate any kind of considerations when it comes to tax revenue breaks, helping us farmers succeed and thrive. So a temporary reprieve gives us a chance to keep employees going. This year, I'm looking at having to fire all my employees and be an owner operated business. I don't want to have to do that. I mean, something like a tax reprieve from the county could keep my employees working this year. So when we're talking about slim, slim margins with the depressed market that's going on and the overproduction that's happening in Southern California right now, I really hope you take these things into consideration. And I appreciate your time today, and I appreciate you listening to what we have to say. Thank you.
Dr. Papano Randall Smith, Magic Show LLC. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate a lot of what's been said already, and I just want to caution everybody or ask that, please don't think that you have an industry here that's looking a gift horse in the mouth and demanding more, more, and more. The reality is, across this entire state, the industry is imploding. It's going under. It's not all due to county tax and regulations. Predominance of that is the excise tax. And one of the elephants in the room that maybe some store owners would not like to hear me say, and that is, the excise tax, every time you hear a reference to that, they say it's fifteen percent tax on the retail sale, that consumer pays for it. That's not what's happening. Growers are paying the excise tax in the form of lower wholesale prices. The growers are taking the hit at every tax level that we have in this state. If we want to have a viable industry and have some funds to go after the illegal guys, we got to keep this thing going. And I just urge you to consider maybe a little bit, little bit steeper break here, maybe matching Humboldt, maybe that's not reasonable or not going to happen right now, but that would be a good start. I would also ask the board at some point to use your authority and your influence to contact the governor and the legislature to do something about the excise tax. These are, there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle. They all matter, including the local one. So thank you for your consideration, and let's see how things go. And best wishes to all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a quick comment on the dispensaries. As we're talking about three to five percent taxes, and I'm okay with either three to five percent taxes, but I just wanted to give some type of clarification, because you said you were a little bit confused of where that money was going. So where that money is going is, we have to be competitive with other dispensaries and the black market. So now we can't, if we're getting a product for twenty dollars, we can't make twenty dollars anymore. Now we have to charge five dollars, six dollars maybe, to be able to compete with the black market. That's what's going on right now in the dispensary. So, I mean, if there was any other type of question, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you guys and answer any you guys have. All right?
Clark, can you go to the room, please? There is no online public record or public comment, sorry.
Okay. Going back to the room, any last public comment before we bring it back to the board? No? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Are there any questions for staff at this time or comments?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, and I don't want to contradict the clerk, but I am actually seeing a handout on the public comment.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Go ahead, make your comment now.
Thank you, this is Jennifer Smith. I'm going to echo most of what you've already heard today. Bottom line, the industry is asking for parity with other municipalities, as many of others have said, and we're not asking for a handout. A larger discussion will be had in the future, and that is which, the one in which that we move to a gross proceeds. Because as we all know, a flat tax is regressive and it's punitive. And there's no other industry that is taxed at five points along its supply chain other than cannabis. There's no other agricultural commodity that is taxed for the privilege to plant. There is no other agricultural commodity that is taxed before it is sold. There's a reason why our sales tax, our general sales tax, is a percentage and not a flat tax. So I appreciate that we're having this conversation. I think this is the next step in maintaining a sustainable industry in this county. In a farm like mine that has six employees, that equates to eighteen jobs in the county. It's not just my employees that are affected when businesses shut down. It's the whole county that's affected. So I appreciate your time in looking at this and I'm encouraged by the fact that the industry will remain sustainable in Calveras as long as we continue to talk and have these discussions. Thanks.
Are we good with online now?
There is no more public comment.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll go back to where we started. Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And, you know, it was four years ago, I noted last night, that 2018 that we banned cannabis. So to the point that was made earlier, you guys have some serious fortitude, which makes you good farmers, also makes you gamblers, but that's just part of farming, I suppose. We have five hundred and sixteen CBCB badges. That is a lot of jobs. That actually would make you guys the second largest industry next to the county, next to government in this county. So it's important to recognize what we're trying to preserve here is not just the five hundred and sixteen badges, but the, if we use the multiplier, three jobs for every one full-time employee, you know, that's fifteen hundred jobs. That is the guys who are doing, and gals who are doing electrical, hauling dirt, making sandwiches, filling up gas tanks, all those things go into this. And we have to try to make sure that we keep these things going. It's a, one of your crew mentioned to me, and I thought it was very wise, as a farmer, you want to share your sheep every year, because that's a recurring income for your farm. If you can only, and you can only slaughter that sheep once. So we have to decide as board and as a community whether we want to slaughter the sheep and have one big meal, or we want to have wool to keep us going for many years ahead. So I'm glad we're taking this up as a board. I look forward to discussion. I certainly support Supervisor Calloway's wanting to go for four quarters. I think that just makes sense. We have a lot of issues we need to figure out and how we make this work. It is a dynamic industry. We're dealing with the feds, we're dealing with the state. I don't know if our reduction in taxes is going to make the difference, but it certainly is important, and it certainly shows a commitment to keeping businesses and people employed in this county. So I look forward to the debate, and the majority of the board is three, since that seemed to be a question before. So we should all be supporting business and tax reduction where we can. Thank you.
Supervisor stop it.
Well, I really wish I could reduce all my taxes. I hate taxes, but, you know, the reality of life, you know, to the tune of over thirty thousand dollars for my income taxes here, I have to pay pretty quick. But to get to the point, you know, debating it with people some weeks ago, you know, fifty percent seemed palatable, but then Humboldt stepped up to eighty-five percent. And, you know, I debate this in my head. You know, I go, I go one way where it's apples and oranges. Humboldt has diversified their economy. Calvers hasn't so much. You know, the lion's share of our taxes coming in, when it comes to general fund, there's no other single industry that has donated as much, even in just the last two years, to the county's general fund as cultivation. So Humboldt has a harbor. They still have mills running, they're still doing logging, far more than we are. And I could go down to the point of TOT, making us look like a little, little people, making us look little. So they have something to fall back on. But the other, the other, the other way to look at this, when I argue with myself in my head about it, is, you know, goes to Mr. Garamendi's point about harvesting the sheep, you know? That sheep could produce for a few more years, possibly have more sheep for mills, and we can get our wool. Or do we slaughter it now and not have anything that's sustainable in the future? Very, very, very good one, Mr. Garamendi, because that's, you know. It's, so there's definitely two sides to it. I'm amenable to it being four quarters. All in all, this market, we're charging before you're making your profit, you know? This is, this is beyond our gross receipts tax that I just bypassed. But at the same time, we don't do that to any other industry. It's, it's just not a thing until cannabis. So until you get those cells, that's past December, I'm sure, by the time you're processing, if you're not either indoor or mixed light. So I mean, by the time it gets processed and everything else, you're looking at, hopefully, a January cell, and we're going through four quarters. So I'm amenable to extending it for the year, and then revisiting it later to see where we're at. Where I'm having a hard time landing is the percentage. I personally can't go eighty-five percent. I think we, we just saved ourselves some with the excise tax and not doing that. So there's room to debate. So I'll leave it at that for now, and I'll give further input later.
Are there any other board comments?
Go ahead, Gary.
All right. I support seventy-five percent reduction. I support four quarters. Now, how did I come to that? First of all, as was mentioned earlier about property tax, under the Revenue and Taxation Code, your property taxes, my property taxes, maybe many of you in here, were reduced substantially when the recession hit. Now, under the Revenue and Taxation Code, what's happened to this woman over here, happened to me and probably happened to all of you, our property taxes go back up to where they should have been over base value. So every property owner in Calaveras County had their property, who were impacted by the recession, had their property taxes reduced. What I'm saying is, let's reduce these for this group for the four quarters, and then you can revisit it in January. Do you like the word "they"? The other is the ag community minus cannabis were allowed to apply for COVID relief funds. Cannabis industry is not allowed, was not allowed to apply for COVID relief funds. I think when the, it was cognizant, it was cognizant of this board, or when we put together Measure G, the, as Supervisor Garamendi said, the dynamics of the industry, it was a fledging industry, we didn't know what was happening, and so we allowed the high-low percentage tax rate. So it's not as if we're reducing the tax rate outside of Measure G. It's what's allowed. Ag products do not pay a tax on their crop. For example, I don't pay a tax on my grapes. You pay the tax when you buy a bottle of wine. So in cannabis's case, you pay the tax as the cult, as the cannabis grower, and whoever buys it retail also pays a tax. You're also paying, if I understand, a carbon offset tax. I don't know of other ag products in this county that pay a carbon offset tax. You also pay an annual fee just to operate. You are not considered an ag product by Calaveras, but you are considered an ag product by the state of California. Market conditions have changed. As I said earlier, what this board did for the retail industry when things were really bad due to COVID, I'm proud of what this board did and how rapidly we responded to the needs of our business community. I think we need to do the same here. Under the Revenue and Taxation Code, the county has five years to collect my taxes before they come after my property. On here, the DCC, Mr. Wayland can pull your permit if you miss two payments. So I just think, is this an industry that we, as a county, are going to commit to supporting as we go through these maturity stages of the industry? Or we just can't compare it to other ag crops that have been here? I mean, I compared it to grapes or to almonds. You could do the same thing. But those are not fledging new industries. So I think if we're going to do something, let's bite the bullet, let's do it, and let's let you review it in January. So I'm asking for a seventy-five percent reduction and four quarters on this modification to the ordinance. And I can give you more reasons, but I'll hold off.
Vice Chair Topanari?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Greg. Greg, how many permits are in process right now?
We have about fifty-three that are conditionally approved, and I don't have the numbers in front of me right now that are in applied status. My recollection is, it's around a hundred and sixty-five.
Okay. So when you say conditionally approved, then they will more than likely start growing in this coming growing season?
Ordinarily, I would say yes. This year, the pace has been a little slower than 2021 for them, just showing, you know, in terms of what they're submitting and getting going. So there are more conditional approvals, but the pace is substantially slower this year so far. So I can't really tell you that they are going to get permitted this year.
Okay. And if this passes on a four-fifth vote, you had mentioned that there are a number of the permittees or growers that are in arrears?
Yes.
And like seventeen of them are substantial? Thirteen that are two quarters past?
That's right, yes.
Four that are three quarters past? And fourteen that are one quarters past? So how did, if this is passed by this board today, how does it affect those that are, that are in arrears? Are they going to pay at the current rate to get, to be brought up to date? Or are they still going to be held at the arrears at the time they went into arrears at that rate?
This will not change their status, because this applies to January first through whichever date, if any of the board chooses. So those arrearses occurred in 2020 or as a result of 2021 cultivation, so that's not going to impact those arrearses.
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 Okay, so it's not going to affect them, regardless they're in arrears at that amount of money. And if it's, some of them are as far back as three quarters, that's a substantial amount that they owe.
That is a substantial amount.
And that's, and it's brought up, and it's true about the penalties that are added on top of that as they go along. So the penalties could add up to substantial So the penalties could add up to substantially more than the original taxes that they.
It would take a long time for that to happen, because the quarters are three months and the penalty is 10%, so it would take 30 months, I think, to, for that to happen. But then I'd say there's not a direct impact because of the timing, but there is an indirect impact, because if they're able to keep, keep from going an additional quarter in arrearses, then they're not getting into three quarters, which is really significant.
Okay. No, I wasn't gonna do a whole lot of comment on, on this, because I don't think it's gonna change anybody's vote on what's going forward. But I, I was in my own business for 30 years, and, and I went through a lot, especially when it crashed. When the market, 2008, 2009, 2010, there was no jobs. We went two years on basically having nothing. And yet I had to pay everything. I still had to pay the carbon offset tax, because we had, from the previous year, used paint. And all the inspections that we had to do and everything that it cost to, to run that particular industry and that business was still there, including corporation taxes and everything else. So I went through a period with no relief. And, and I think if you look at any industry, I don't care what it is, whether it's this industry or any other industry, the market goes up and down, goes up and down throughout. You have to be able, as a business owner, you have to be able to survive those. You have to look forward when things are good and put money away for, when, when times are bad, so you can survive if you're going to. A lot of times in 2008, 2009, a lot of the steel industry that I was in, a lot of those businesses went under. They couldn't, they couldn't, they were so heavily in debt, and they, they just couldn't survive, because there was virtually no jobs. And what jobs were available to bid on went so dirt cheap that, that it was, you had guys bidding nothing just to have a job. So, you know, it, it's not conducive to just this business, although it's a new business, and I certainly understand that. And I commend the people that have withstood all the things that have gone on in this industry, and including in this county, as Jack brought up. So, but I, I, again, didn't have any relief. I, I, there was no relief that I could find to stay in business. We, we had to just endure and make sure when we went along in the good times and money was coming in, that we were, we were putting it away, knowing that the market goes the way it goes. And this time next year, very, could be very well possible that the industry is back going, backing up. So that's what I have to say.
Supervisor Cowalway.
Are cannabis cultivators allowed to have write-offs like a steel company is for IRS for federal purposes?
I don't know the answer to that, but I, I don't think so. But I, I don't know.
We have write-off? Can you, can you show me a write-off?
Well, when I have my own business for losses, you can take losses on your taxes. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, Supervisor. I'm just saying this is not an industry that has the tax advantages that you, not that they have advantages. I was, went through hard times too, but not, I'm sure like you did. But it's not an industry that has the traditional tax advantages, that they can do write-offs like we can. I mean, they can't even go to the normal banking system that we can.
I, I still had to pay all the fees and everything else that I had to pay in order to stay in that business. Everything had to be paid in current, so.
Are there any other supervisors in your comments?
I guess I'm the only one that hasn't spoken yet. So I'm open for further dialogue. However, I will be honest, this has been a hard one to swallow. I still can't wrap my head around how you can tax something that doesn't exist. All in all, most of that taxes are based off of something, and we're at the local level allowing a taxation that just, I don't know, how do you, on gross that doesn't even exist till after the fact. But that's neither here nor there. That is what the people of this county have supported to go through. With that, you know, government's supposed to make it easier for businesses. The state has done no one any favors, not only the cultivators, but also local jurisdictions, putting in, making it difficult for us to, to control the industry within our own areas. I concur with a lot of the points that Supervisor Cowalway has made. I think that there's some leeway of understanding how to support businesses, and there's an offshoot of just not just this industry, but what this industry has given to the overall global picture of this county's economy. It's as simple as an extra grocery bag being bar at the local grocery store that sales tax that generating, because we have individuals having jobs. If we kneecap it, as Supervisor Garamendi has said, slaughter the sheep, we're not gonna see that in the long run. And the purpose of it was knowing that this industry has been here for a long, long time, and it's to make it survive legally in this county and bring it to equal of other businesses for them to survive. It sounds like the board has an appetite to discuss other numbers other than the 50%. At this time, I do agree with the four quarters. I don't see bringing it back as the recommended by staff. I think the four quarters is something that should be considered. As for the percentage, I'm gonna leave it up to my further board members for further discussion on what, what to bring forward for, for this. Supervisor Stoppa.
Oh, Madam Chair, I, I, just because I turn my light doesn't mean you're done. So if you have more to say, I'm, I'm listening.
I'm wrapped up.
I'm learning, Merida. As I said before, I'm having a hard time with 85%. You know, 50% was palatable to me. I think we gave ourselves some more room to work with, with what we just did with the excise tax. I'm not able to get to 75%, but I do understand the economics. I do think that Mr. Toffenelli does have good points, but at the same time, you know, it was the state that didn't help you out then, and they aren't helping us out now. And we did, the question earlier was asked, why don't we petition the governor or the state? We did in December. We sent it to them, you know? And, and we're not the only ones by far in the state. And there's counties across the state making changes, hoping that the state sees what we're doing and follows suit. And, but, you know, here's my wish hand, I won't say the rest. I can get to 60% right now, but I'm open to the debate. If someone else says they're okay with 60, I will be willing to make a motion, but I'm still open to the debate.
65.
Forty.
I'll take 64.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna get in the middle of your bidding war. I will let you two.
I'm on the hide, but I gotta finish this, so.
I just keep thinking, if we were back in the early 80s and, and we had a way that we thought, maybe it could have worked, maybe it could, if we could have saved the cement plant industry. You know, I don't want to be looking back over my shoulder and thinking we didn't do everything we could to keep businesses going here. So I will, I will, whichever two numbers you two come up with somewhere between, would we say 60, 65? That's where we're at now, I will, I'll support you guys.
I feel like I'm at a fairground auction.
So we've got two numbers.
We have one number.
One number, okay. So we got, we've got one number.
Do you want me to make the motion, Supervisor?
Or you can.
I'll make a motion. Let me make sure I'm on the right item, nine or 10. To introduce and waive full reading of uncodified ordinance reducing the cannabis cultivation rates specified in section dot 356 dot 050 B1-3 on a temporary basis as authorized by section 3 dot 56 dot 070 in the sum of 60% with the amendment to all four quarters of this year, which, and authorize summary publication, which requires affirmative four-fifths vote of the board.
I want to do a modified.
My motion's on the table?
One motion, dirty on the table.
Is, is, if there's a second, then mine fails, and then you get to modify it.
Is there a second? No, second, sorry.
I'll, I'll second it.
I want to do a modified motion. The same, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
We got a motion and a second on the table.
And I want to modify the motion, which takes precedent over the motion.
Good.
I want the same.
I'm looking at Ms. Edwards with, with the smile on her face right now.
I was gonna say, y'all are really gonna make me pull up the board procedures today? All right, give me, give me just one second. If you don't mind, I'd just like to double check one thing. Procedurally. In general, we, and I apologize, Supervisor Cowalway, in general, we would have a vote on the motion that is in front of the board, and then a substitute motion, an amended substitute motion could be inserted in its place. But let me just. Okay, so the motion may be amended prior to a vote, but only with the consent of the moving and seconded members. So Supervisor Cowalway can propose an amendment, but Supervisors Stoppa and Garamendi would have to agree to that amendment.
I'll, I'll hear your proposal, Madam Cowalway.
I wish to follow the same introduction and waive reading of the ordinance as Supervisor Stoppa in amending the 60% to 64% and, of course, the four quarters.
We have an amendment on the, on the table. Sarah, do I need to ask for a second on the amendment? I need a reminder.
Well, I think it would be whether, so the motion that is on the table is Supervisor Stoppa's. Supervisor Cowalway has suggested an amendment, so it's up to Supervisor Stoppa and Garamendi to indicate whether they are amenable to the amendment, or whether they've.
I see, yeah, I see two pass there, as she explained, or one of the people can withdraw their motion or second. There's also that. That said, my motion stands as said, I hear what you have to say, and I'll justify the reason I'm saying this. I was a hard line 50%. But I made, I made a little bit of room for me to work with. I understand the situation of the growers, that's why I'm in favor of bringing this forward and doing the 50%. But I'm not withdrawing my 60% motion, so it lies with Mr. Garamendi.
We all know that it takes four of us to get this done. And so I guess the question, I feel like a kid in the middle here. We need to get four, we need to get to four votes. So I, I continue, if you're a hard line at 60, then I continue to support that.
I'm sorry Supervisor Stoppa backed down the four points, but I'll go with 60.
Okay, so we, we have a motion and a second and a, and a proposed amendment, which was rejected by the party making the motion. So the motion and second, as originally proposed, are now in front of the board.
Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all those in opposed.
No.
4-1.
Do you want me to read the entire motion and the vote?
I, 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 did I read it clearly, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, I believe that, as I understood it, the motion is to approve the item as agendized, but with the temporary reduction of the cultivation tax rate, a reduction in 60% from the current rate, and for that to reduction, that reduction to be for the four quarters of this calendar year, at which point it expires, the reduction expires.
Yes.
And you got the first and the second, so, okay. Okay. Thank you. We will now move on to the next agenda. I see that it's getting time and everyone's probably getting hungry.
You'll just hang out one second, we'll do this quietly.
Sorry, clarification again, so this comes back March 22nd to be approved.
Correct.
This is just what's gonna come forward.
Just to move it, yes, yeah, this is just to move it to the next meeting, correct. Okay, with that, we'll move on to supervisory announcements. I will start to my left with Supervisor Cowalway.
I'm having a meeting with the Balacido community that I took as part of the redistricting this Saturday, and that's all.
Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you, and thanks for everybody just hanging with us so we can finish this cleanly. There's a, there's a meeting tonight at Railroad Flat Elementary, former site of the Railroad Flat Elementary School, for a community to come together and talk about the community center that we're building there as a county, and things that they want to see happening in there. So I see a lot of D2 people in the, spread the word when you go back up the hill. We'd love to have everybody, 6 o'clock, and Sheriff will be there as well as county reps. Thank you.
Vice Chair, Toffenelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Supervisor Paul Endor and myself have a special meeting with COG tomorrow evening at 5:30 here. I'm not sure if everybody knows that Amber Collins, the current executive officer of COG, has turned in her resignation, and that will be on March 4th. So part of the agenda would be reviewing and possibly appointing a new director. Also, I have a Mountain Valley MS meeting to discuss. Also, I have a Mountain Valley MS meeting to discuss, again, continuing discussions of Stanislaus County pulling out of Mountain Valley MSA, and that's it.
Supervisor Stoppa.
Madam Chair, nothing terribly important to report at this time.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report, but however, we do need to move over to the clerk and capture something we did not do this morning, which is report out of the last closed session from last week.
Report out for the closed session of February 8th, 2022, item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. No reportable action taken. Item two pursuant to Government Code Section 54657B1, public employment title planning director, there was no reportable action taken. Item two pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation career at all versus Calaveras County, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 18CV43460, there was no reportable action taken. Item four pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, no reportable action taken. And item five pursuant to Government Code Section 54657B1, number one, public employees' performance evaluation, titles, planning director, chief building official, county librarian, environmental management administrator, public works director, county council, county administrative officer, health and human services agency director, there was no reportable action taken.
And thank you, and with that, everyone have a good day.